I'm going to call the City Council Caucus Meeting to order for December 14th, 2015. If the clerk would read the first item for final consideration.
Item number one, under final consideration, an ordinance regarding zoning changes for electric vehicle charging stations.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent, item number two.
Item number two, a resolution approving the 2016 Downtown Special Assessment District, DSIC budget.
We've had a public hearing, no one had comments, so without objection on consent, item number three.
Item number three, a resolution approving the 2016 budget for the Upper Union Street Business Improvement District.
Same situation there, without objection on consent, item number four.
Item number four, under original consideration, an ordinance incorporating 810 Arch Street into Arch Street, introduced only with the resolution calling for a public hearing on December 28, 2015.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent, item number five.
Item number five, a resolution adopting various sections of streets to be incorporated into consolidated local street and highway improvement program chips via New York State DOT 2015.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent, item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing acceptance of 2016 New York State Special Traffic Options Program Stop DWI Grant Award.
Without objection on consent, item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution authorizing acceptance of fiscal year 2015 State Homeland Security Grant Program SHSP Award.
Without objection on consent, item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the issuance of revocable permit number 599 for a sign located at 852 State Street.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent, item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the issuance of revocable permit number 600 to Yaya's house for a sign at 170 Lafayette Street.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent, item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution authorizing the sale of 367 12th Street.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent, item number 11.
Item number 11, a resolution authorizing the sale of 2628 McCullin Street.
Also discussed in committee, without objection on consent, item number 12.
Item number 12, a resolution to settle a claim with 21st Century Insurance, ASO Maryland Jeffers.
Discussed in claims, without objection on consent, item number 13.
Item number 13, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a tax surchargeary for 1732 and 1738 Avenue A.
Also discussed in claims, without objection on consent, item number 14.
Item number 14, a resolution recognizing the 7th Annual Broadway Chappers Toy Run in support of the Toys for Tots.
This will be taken out of order, Ms. Perazzo will present that, item number 15.
Item number 15, a resolution recognizing the Friends of the Greenhouse.
This will also be taken out of order, Mr. Kozier will present that, and item number 16.
Item number 16, under contract and supply, a resolution to accept the bid and award, the contract to Nisk Unit Tire and Service for Police Vehicle Fit Out to Nisk Unit Tire and Service.
Discussed in committee, without objection on consent, and two new items that were discussed in City Development and Planning Committee tonight, item number 17.
Item number 17, under original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 910 State Street to Schenectady Community Action Program.
Without objection on consent, item number 18.
Item number 18, a resolution authorizing the sale of 455 Manchester Road.
Without objection on consent, if there's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus Meeting, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Moot of Aaron, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, I will now call the City Council Meeting to order for Monday, December 14th, 2015, and ask you to rise for the invocation by the Reverend Richard Frank from Marinatha Ministries.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for your goodness, and at this time of year, we're asking for those that are hurting and that are lonely, whose hurt and loneliness is only accentuated at this time of year, that they will find their peace and strength in you. We also ask that the goodwill towards men and the peace that was promised over 2,000 years ago would be felt in all of our neighborhoods and our communities of this city. We pray by your spirit that you will move and minister, touching and blessing all of our first responders, those that put their lives on the line to protect us. We also ask for all of our city officials, elected and appointed, that the hand of God will be upon them to lead them and guide them for the good of our community and for the good of our city. In all of this, we ask in the wonderful name of the Lord Jesus Christ, amen.
I'm going to call on City Clerk Chuck Thorne to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Perazzo. Ms. Porterfield. Mr. Brari is excused. Mr. Kozier.
Yeah.
Mr. Riggi.
Yeah.
Mr. Moot of Aaron.
Present.
Ms. King.
Present. All right, we have, let's see. We have two out-of-order resolutions, so the first one is for Toys for Tots, Ms. Perazzo.
Madam President.
You have the floor.
Thank you. This is a resolution recognizing the 7th Annual Broadway Chappers Toy Run in support of Toys for Tots. Whereas Toys for Tots is a nationally recognized program, an official activity of the United States Marine Corps, and an official mission of the United States Marine Corps Reserve, whose mission is to collect new unwrapped toys in the months leading up to holiday season in order to later distribute them as gifts to less fortunate children in the community. And whereas Lee Sykes, the owner of Broadway Chappers on Kings Road in Schenectady serves his county, excuse me, served his country faithfully as an active-duty marine for six years, and during said service became intimately familiar with the joys of Toys for Tots campaign. And where Mr. Sykes has continued his service at home by organizing toy drives that contribute to local Toys for Tots campaigns, and by starting annual toy runs where anywhere from 30 to 100 motorcycles, depending on the weather, this time of year, participate in a convoy to deliver unwrapped toys to children in need. And whereas, with November 28, 2015, marking the 7th Annual Toy Run of the Broadway Chappers, Mr. Sykes has only dedicated himself and his organization to do more by arranging to host the event semi-annually with an additional toy run taking place in July of 2016. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor Gary R. McCarthy and the City of Schenectady, excuse me, Schenectady City Council hereby pause in their deliberations to remember, as Mr. Sykes and as Broadway Chappers do, those children who may go without the joy of a new toy during the holidays, and to encourage residents of the city to follow the example of Mr. Sykes and find ways to give back to the less fortunate in our community. I move this, Madam President.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye. Congratulations.
Well, I'd like to say thank you, and I'm honored to do Toys for Tots, and I'm honored to have Gunny here with me tonight who heard about this. I began doing this, I was touched when I was a guest on the train, and I had a young boy try to trade a toy for a blanket for his little sister, and at that point, I became dedicated to this. And I've recently secured a 4,000-square-foot building in Schenectady where I'm now moving my business, and with the extra land and room, I've dedicated a spot where we're now going to make it part of Schenectady instead of supporting just Toys for Tots. I want to do it here in our town, and we're going to start this year on July 24th as Christmas in July, and see if two runs can't double what we can do for the town, and thank you, thank you very much.
All right, the second resolution is for Friends of the Greenhouse, Mr. Kozier.
Thank you, Madam President. And can I have all the folks who were here this evening, that we can recognize them? Many of these faces will be very familiar to all you folks here in the community, and again, just another great project that they've all been working on together. And, Madam President, if I may?
You have the floor.
Thank you, we're all good. See, the closer you get to me, then you got to speak, so unfortunately, that's why Ray is down there, and so is Chuck. It's a good thing Ray is down there, though, actually. We have a resolution this evening recognizing the Friends of the Greenhouse, and whereas the Friends of the Greenhouse have experienced a rebirth and a renewed sense of purpose in response to weather damage sustained by the Central Park Greenhouses during the last year's harsh winter. And whereas the group participated in a park cleanup day in the spring, and they helped remove one ton of scrap from the greenhouse site, painted picnic tables, planters, and other structures at the site. And whereas the Friends of the Greenhouse organized a weekly Thursday night volunteer night in conjunction with the Cooperative Extension Master Gardeners to spread mulch, weed, planted the garden areas, and performed general maintenance around the greenhouses. And whereas the group organized a successful fall plant sale, which you've been doing for many, many years, raising enough money to heat the greenhouses this coming winter. And whereas the Friends have identified and coordinated maintenance and repairing of the heating components and the glass repair and replacement of the greenhouses. And whereas a team of storm watchers has been formed who will protect the facility from the damage of accumulating snow, we don't have to worry about that so far, right? Keep our fingers crossed. And whereas the members facilitated the application and award of the grant from the Carlilian Foundation for the repair and replacement of over 400 feet of perimeter fencing. And whereas the efforts of the Friends of the Greenhouse were appreciated to the degree that the group members Chuck Thorne and Pam Pearlman were recognized by Schenectady's Cooperative Extension as Volunteers of the Year at their annual meeting. And whereas the Friends of the Greenhouse will continue to work towards a goal of establishing the Central Park Greenhouses into a regional horticulture showcase. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and the City Council do by hereby pause in their deliberations to recognize the accomplishments of the Friends of the Greenhouse, and in doing so, encourage the culture of volunteerism within the City of Schenectady. Madam President, if I may move?
Seconded by Mr. Moot of Aaron, all in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
You do have the honor, if you may.
I'd like to just thank everyone for this award. I think everyone who's present here this evening has done something that's really outstanding in terms of keeping the greenhouse going, and I know over the last couple of years there was a lot of concern about how the greenhouse would fare, and I think what's really interesting with this group of people is that what makes Schenectady such a great area to live in is the residents that live here take great pride in their community, and it's just a real great effort that this group has presented, and I'm just really glad to be part of it, and thank you so much for supporting our endeavor.
Can we introduce the rest of the people, pass the microphone down? Or introduce themselves?
Arden Lawand.
Maggie Brown.
Janet Chin.
Charlotte Morgan.
Frank Gilmore.
Don Ackerman.
Ray.
And Chuck Thorne.
Yes, thank you all for the hard work. All right, we have no public hearings tonight, so I'll move on to approval of the minutes from November 23rd, 2015. Moved by Ms. Perazzo, seconded by Mr. Moot of Aaron, all in favor? Aye. Communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, December 14, 2015, under official from the Mayor, a list of appointments dated December 14, 2015, a letter dated December 7, 2015, from Jack Falvo, Assistant Chief of Police, recommending the award of the City Police Department Fit Out of New Vehicles be awarded to Nisk Unit Tire and Service. Under general, there are none, under petitions, there are none.
All right, we'll move on to committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? No, okay. Then we'll move on to privileges of floor related to the legislative agenda. I have two people signed up to speak, the first is Mary McLean.
Tonight, council is going to vote on a resolution approving the 2016 Downtown Special Assessment District Budget. One of the items listed in the budget is urban beautification. Does council know what the DSIC means by this item? No one asked about it at the committee meeting. Does the DSIC plan to decorate the light poles next summer like they did this year? And is City Council okay with that? The hodgepodge hanging from the downtown light poles this summer was not beautiful. It was tasteless, without theme or connection. Look at the picture in the cassette that the photographer took. Collected, liked things, put them all together in a grouping, and snapped the picture. The result is very dramatic. This is not what the downtown had this year. It was circus. I think before the DSIC budget is approved, city officials should find out how the group plans to beautify downtown next summer. Item number one, regarding zoning changes for electric vehicles. This change is necessary so that Schenectady can become a certified climate-smart community. The city would be only the third municipality throughout the state of New York to have certification. If it's such a great distinction, why don't all the communities have it? Because it's too costly. Schenectady needs to pay off its debts, not purchase hybrid cars, spend money on plug-in stations, and new training for first responders. Removing a victim from a hybrid car is not the same as a regular car. If it's not done properly, someone can be electrocuted. The request for certification is an irresponsible way to spend taxpayer dollars. Council should concentrate on using taxpayer money to pay off current debts and not make unnecessary new ones. Thank you.
Thank you. P. D. Vorus.
My name is P. D. Vorus, and I live in the city. DSIC this summer planted some bushes in the area and back of my apartment, along City Center and a lot of other places. The bushes they planted in back of me were literally set on top of the ground and mulch piled upon them. After a while, these bushes, of course, started to die, and I realized what had been done. I went to DSIC and reported it to them. Their response was "city mission." That doesn't make sense to me as a response, but I reported the problem to them. I left. From there, I made a round to what used to be called the Cultural Arts Center in back of a municipal housing project. In that area, there was so much trash, debris, filth, huge planters that had once had grand design were filled with garbage. These cute little DSIC toys that they started off with were in back of those buildings, just sitting there. The growth in the area was waist-high. I left. I was so disgusted. This is a place for rodents, reptiles, and Strawberry Hill. They would really like a place like Strawberry Hill. I left. I came back after a week, nothing had been done about those bushes. I got my hoe. I removed the bushes, I dug deep holes, I took a knife, or the end of my hoe, and I stripped the root that were strangling each other. I reset those plants in plenty of water, and they will grow. I didn't do the others, I just did the two in back of my building. Now, if they'd rather spend their good time doing salsa recipes, I recommend that you really have somebody to oversee this group if you are going to fund what they're supposed to do. And I also question the business about the vehicles. First of all, as far as I know, these are just going to be used vehicles that have already been tested, being brought into this area by a consortium that plans uncovering the Ford County, this area, and the city does not own any parking lots, so those two meters on Broadway and Liberty are there, the city does not own the lot. I don't know what participation the city is going to do, but I do notice that there seems to be some cherry-picking about what the city engineer is doing in the way of, of, what do you call it, permits on signs.
Please summarize.
I recommend the city engineer get an assistant that is involved in solar environmental engineering.
Thank you.
Yes. I am here in behalf of the property that is for sale at 910 State Street. We, the Church of God at 920 State Street, have been part of the community for over 30 years. We are a multicultural bilingual church who strives to better our community. Through the series of different ministries that we currently have, we serve people of all genders, race, ages, and social backgrounds, including the prisoners. In the last few years, we have been increasing in numbers and have been growing. We have also been interested in the possibility of extending our facility in order to facilitate our community service. With this in mind, when the property of 910 State Street became available, we met with Mayor McCarthy and followed the procedures that was given to us at that time. We need, we would need to be informed of any requisite or process that we need to obtain for this property, for we are very interested and are willing to move forward with this, with this process. We are determined to extend and to carry out the vision and the mission of our church. We trust that you will consider us in this decision-making, and that we will take into consideration, and that you will take us into consideration so we can help this community. In other words, okay, we are interested in 910 State Street, not only for a parking facility, but to expand our church. Our dreams and our goal is to help the community. We wanted, we would want to put a food pantry, we would like to open up a after-school center, we would like to help those that have no place to stay or to go with the means of our facility, and we would take it into consideration if you guys would give us the opportunity and help us with this. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. All right, I have no one else signed up to speak on issues related to the legislative agenda, so I'll declare that portion of the meeting closed. I will now entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda, Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Moot of Aaron, all in favor? Aye. Okay. Well now, move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. First person I have is Anthony Carata.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Madam President. First of all, before I speak on the two-part issue I want to speak on, I'd just like to say, early this month, it was nice to see our elected officials and the community get together, raise close to $8,000 for Carver Community Center. Now, the first issue. Saturday, while City Hall and the library was having this, held the open house, the CVS over there at Sherington Plaza closed its doors. Now, why is this a city issue and not a corporate issue? It's because we have a lot of these elderly, senior citizens, and local families that live over in that part of the city, and they depend on CVS for the medications. Now, it was a shame that it closed down, and now it's a burden for those people I mentioned, those elderly, senior citizens, and local families who depend on CVS for the prescriptions. I urge the Council Mayor, look into a situation, a solution, to help ease the burden on the people I mentioned, the elderly and the senior citizens and local families for their prescriptions, because now they need a car or friend to take them, or no pharmacy or a bus. And 3:52 stops at certain times of day around that part of the city. Now, the second issue. I know that the Mayor and Council has been trying to come up with solutions from bids from private corporations or businesses to help ease the burden on the senior citizens for the snowplow on the streets in the wintertime. I know you all don't want the problem that happened last year, which was a huge mess. You had a bunch of residents complaining, especially in Hill of the Berg Ave, and one person called your office, Mayor, tried to get out of a ticket, called his secretary, now you, secretary. Secretary had called back, said she hadn't authorized to get out of the ticket. Now, there's a couple of size issues with the snowplow issue. One, as a resident of the City of Schenectady, I'm constantly walking around the city streets. In the wintertime, I try to get close enough possible to the sidewalk. Sometimes I can't even do that because the, when the snowplow comes through, that the plow just bangs skull sky-high, that I and other residents who walk have to go outside the street in order to see a car coming both ways. My landlady, Barbara McBride, remember that name, Barbara McBride, in the next car, she got stuck there in the corner of Georgia Dick and Albany Street. Now, I urge the Council and the Mayor to come up with a timely solution as also. I'd like to wish the Mayor and the Council a very Merry Christmas and a very God-blessed New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. Deborah Rembert.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm here in the capacity of Tended Association President of Schenectady County, and I'm here to talk about the situation that has happened, Lori and I, with this young lady here, come on up, where they have had, were in housing, and this young lady, I'm going to let her have her say, but I want to say that she was in housing only until, from October, until this month, and now she gets evicted because she doesn't want to deal with infestation problems in these landlords' houses. Landlords are supposed to make sure that infestation problems are not existing in their houses. Instead, they are letting people move into these apartments with these kinds of problems, and then want to evict them as soon as they complain and say that they don't appreciate living in that kind of a situation. I think that's very unfair to the people when they're paying their God-earned monies to these landlords, and then landlords have the audacity to say that if you don't like that kind of a situation, you can get out. That's not fair to these people, and these people should not have to be subjected to that, and the fact- And the fact that these landlords do not have a certificate of occupancy, how do you hope to reinforce that situation to make it better for the tenants that have to live in these deplorable conditions? These landlords need to have their certificates available for every tenant that lives in their dwellings, and they don't have that. And a lot of these landlords, I went there today, and I saw that the porch needed to be repaired. The landlord is getting an astronomical amount of rent. $900 is a lot of rent to be receiving from a person that is a working person and is trying to take care of their household, and the landlord is not taking care of the property? This needs to stop. Here in Schenectady, and I don't care where we live at, the landlord is being paid. You cannot get paid and not try to take care of where these people are forced to live. And in Hamilton Hill, it is done strategically. These people are having these dilapidated houses and then asking for all this money. Now, I'm going to yield some more of my time to this young lady so that she can finish talking about what's happening to her.
I moved in in October, was reassured on a lease advertibly many times, clean, bug-free. That was my main concern. I wasn't there a week, and I moved my fridge refrigerator. It wasn't live. I killed it. My daughter comes to me in the morning.
Please speak into the microphone.
It's an itch. Look, a bug. I go out with a cockroach crawling up my wall. My 14-year-old got up this morning. There was one in her bed, in her bed, that the dog ate. I have never had to live in such disgusting, disgusting things ever in my whole life, and I grew up on a farm, and I never, ever, my cat caught four mice in one day, four. And that's the least of my worries, the roaches. I have to box up everything. Everything has to be in totes. Everything I packed, I had to repack three times because I keep finding them in my stuff. I can't take my washer with me. They're crawling out of the washer. They're crawling out of the microwave. They're everywhere. And to be told by this man, no, I assure you, it's clean. All my properties are clean. You're going to be so happy. And not a week later, to find this, and my kids now know what cockroaches are that they never knew what they were before, absolutely kills me. And to pay $900 a month, and I get told down at the offices, well, you know what, put it behind you and just move on. In the meantime, he has my rent. He has my security. I have a three-day notice on my door this morning. It's Christmas. I have no place to live. I have nothing. How am I supposed to, as a person that's supposed to be working every day at the city of Schenectady School District, 13 years, I bust my behind, cleaning, 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 do what I have to do for my family to come home, to this? I shouldn't have to. I would understand if I paid $200 a month rent. Okay, you take with what you've got, but even then, you still should have a clean, safe environment for your children. My backyard, there's backyard pictures. That's where my children get to play in, broken toilets. I asked him to clean it. He threw it behind the garage. That was his idea of cleaning. I went to code, explained to code what happened. They told me it's garbage, go to the garbage bureau. I'm at my wit's end. I don't know what to do, and I don't know where to go in three days.
And we have the other young lady here, but she doesn't feel like she's comfortable speaking. He put her furniture, all of her goods, in the garage. Now, I thought he was supposed to secure these people's property in like a storage unit, and he put it in the garage. And I had pictures, I got a picture, but it's on my thing here, where the door is pushed in, there's a window that is cracked and broke and completely out. Somebody can go in and steal this woman's properties, and what is she supposed to do about that? She's also evicted, and her children, are you still going to speak?
And they're staying with me.
Because they don't have a place to go. Now, there's eight children in this one house, and they're all suffering, and that is a disgrace.
Ms. Rembert, I need you to summarize. I've given you each three minutes, and your time is up.
This girl, she doesn't want to speak, so we're speaking for her in her three minutes. We haven't spoken her three minutes yet. She doesn't feel like she can speak, but what I'm saying is, she's a nurse, and she doesn't need to have to come home. Both of these young ladies are working, and they're trying to be self-sufficient, and to live in that deplorable condition is an absolute disgrace, and they're not the only ones. There are a lot of other people that are living in deplorable conditions in this city, and it needs to be addressed, and it needs to be changed, and these landlords need to be, have to deal with what they have done to these families. It's an absolute disgrace.
Okay, Ms. Rembert, you've made good points. Thank you.
Thank you. And what are we going to do about giving them a place to stay in three days?
Okay, the next person I have, and I'm probably going to have difficulty with the name. The last name looks like it's Pajir Anigla, Angela? No?
That's me.
Oh, okay. Good. Okay. Chanel?
Yeah.
You spoke for her behalf. Okay, thank you. Joy Hall.
I'm Joy Hall of Schenectady. I've been around here a long time. I've seen a lot of stuff. Cars parked up on the sidewalk should not be parked up there. People walking in the road when they should be walking up on the sidewalks. I say it is a disgrace for the handicapped and other people, the old people, and everybody else. We've got to do something about this. We can't have cars parked up on the sidewalks. We've got to have the people walking up on the sidewalks, handicap, everywhere, and we've got to keep these streets cleaned up. We can't have junk here and junk there. It's got to be cleaned up. You can't go on living like this.
Thank you. Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Council Mayor. Over the last three or four weeks, there's been articles in the paper, and the political spending machine's been working hard at it. I know events, tried to counteract some of the political spin, but most of it has been false, not by Vince, but Vince was trying to tell the truth and trying to get it out, both the mayor and Christopher Garner, the county attorney, and also Ray Gillen from Metroplex. One, they didn't create 7,000 jobs through the last 10 years. Those are transfer jobs. They counted 400 jobs coming from Wolf Road over to the transportation, for the DOT transportation thing. They counted moving the Golub headquarters, 700 jobs over to the other thing. They counted that as new jobs. That's not new jobs. And then, within less than two years, Golub laid off 20% of those. That's net loss. You had another company that was living on State Street, turned around, bought out 440 on State Street. They counted that as 23 new jobs. Now, how's that new jobs? That's not new jobs. It's been all fuzzy math. The state comptroller came in, and it was reported both by the Gazette and by the New York, from the Albany Times Union, both that Ray Gillen falsified those documents, and it was reported in the paper. Then, in August, again, the Gazette wrote an article stating that they have been trying for one year to get these documents. One year. If these documents are sent to Albany, that means they're public documents. They should be given freely. Then you're asking, why aren't these gentlemen in jail because of falsifying these documents? Well, the Gazette wrote a nice little article saying that the state letter station, through its wisdom, turned around and took away the enforcement power of the New York State Comptroller's office. Boy, that's really nifty, because we just had one Republican and one Democrat now convicted for fraudulent. So, I mean, the corruption is going on completely, and the political spending machines keeps going. We just had a report four weeks ago by the affirmative action. If you take a look at the affirmative action report, all the jobs for minorities were temporary positions. How does that diversify the full-time work position within the city? It doesn't. That's not affirmative action. So, I mean, you know, we just keep going back and forth. We had the Erie Boulevard, no affirmative action. We have $3.2 million of federal money going in for the roundabout, no affirmative action. So, I mean, we keep going around in circles, but we really need to start addressing the jobs for within the city, and hopefully we could start telling naturally the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary McLean.
I want to make some remarks about the three-minute rule. Several years ago, when the Democrats changed the public speaking time from four minutes to three minutes, I went home and timed myself. I learned that five, five-by-eight cards spaced and handwritten would give me three minutes. I have never deviated from those five cards, and yet, there has always been a voice interruption from the presiding officer, and the flashing lights go off as I speak. Do the voters out there in TV land know that there are lights on this podium, just like the traffic lights on the street, green for go, yellow for slow down, and red to stop? Only in my case, by the time I reach the podium, the green light is on and the clock has started. Over the past 10 years, every presiding officer who has sat in the president's chair shaved seconds from my three minutes because I was charged for the time it takes to walk to this microphone. I have also timed council members when they spoke during miscellaneous business. Many times, they spoke for more than five minutes, and no mouth interrupted their train of thought, and no lights flashed in their faces. Council has no right to anything more than they give those who pay their salaries. Council members need to live by the same rules they make for others. If they do that, they will understand what a ridiculous condition exists in this chamber. For instance, there are 16 items on tonight's agenda. Even if a speaker wanted to address a third of them, more than three minutes are needed to make a sound argument on one's position. Sometimes limits are needed, such as the night of the public hearing for the casino, but not on regular council meeting nights, when there are less people in the audience than there are on the council side of the chamber. We are facing a new year and a new presiding officer. Take heed. Other communities have three-minute rules, but they don't zealously enforce them. Thank you.
Thank you. Frank Wicks.
My original motivation to attending these meetings was I saw how one high-overtime policeman, Patrick Morris, could, a combination of aggressive and bad judgment, could fabricate an offense and then have the district attorney's office and the city, no court, no cover for him. But this was just one, but with respect to tonight, we started off with three very uplifting things. One was the, number one, Lee Sykes and his toy run in the Broadway Choppers back in Schenectady. I've been a customer of Lee for 20 years, and about a year ago, he moved out to Rotterdam Junction, and he's the only independent motorcycle dealer, fixer here in Schenectady. He's back and running toy runs. The people on the greenhouse have much to be appreciated for. Mary McLean ought to be appreciated as a committee one for beautification of Schenectady. Any night during the summer, I see her work in her garden, her community garden up on Grand Boulevard. The other thing is that the fortunate, they don't tend to forget what it's like for the unfortunate, and we've had the ability, I guess, the uncomfortable opportunity tonight to understand what it is to be a renter. And it's a tough problem, but the first thing is to understand that not everyone's as fortunate as we are, and the less fortunate are probably working harder than the more fortunate. Finally, next to us, unequal justice under the law. Go back to, you've got Chuck Parker, a 22-year-old male, is assaulted, pepper sprayed and tasered, and the cover-up is to accuse him of assaulting a police officer and incarcerating for assaulting a police officer. A total lie, and then the mayor responds by making the police officer, the police chief that oversaw that, a patrol. It's a scandal.
Please direct your comments to me.
Okay. All right. The next one is in the, last Wednesday, the Times Union or city approves a million payout to cover two suits. Half a million for, against a woman in the fire department, I can't speak for that. The other is a half million dollars for a student, a privileged student, who got his face put in the street by a police officer, and I can't speak to whether that's worth half a million dollars or not, but apparently it was a done, closed session here. But finally, the police sent hundreds of students, throw bottles and vehicles, and police, as they tried to quiet the crowd. I was there, there's no bottles thrown.
Mr. Wicks, please summarize. Your time is up.
Okay. I'll hand out copies of this letter and my own letter in the paper.
Thank you. Carlos Carraballo.
I am Carlos Carraballo, Hispanic minister for the Church of God here in Schenectady, and concerning this property at 910 State Street, we would like to be kept aware of what the process is because it's not a done deal yet, and we want to be aware of how we can work with the city to acquire this property for our use. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete DeVores.
I'm still Pete DeVores, and I still live in the city. Before I even get started, I want to recommend that you all rejoice in the fact that patrolman Daniel Holsclaw received a sentence of over 300 years to life. 29-year-old patrolman decided that he was doing women a favor, raping them instead of taking them to jail. Sometimes justice is done. Wasn't very happy about wasting my votes this time, after having seen three times this body elect to seat certain people in the arena here and take the public that comes here every other week and makes seating arrangements for them outside. The third time it was done, because Metroplex had given signs to their legions that come and fill this hall, but don't even speak. They were given signs to seat, to be filmed for the occasion. Of course, it was... Of course, it was all about the New Harbor and their presentation. The people did not speak. The legion of army that follows them seated and held up their signs. But the election is over. The election is over. I've made comment about a lot of work happening around here. I live right across the street. I haven't seen or heard any of it being done. So, maybe a solution has been found. Municipal workers work at night. You don't have to be worried about traffic being hit, nobody's going to be in your way. You are going to stand in force, keeping people from putting up graffiti, keeping others with cherry pickers planting blasting caps in trees to blow up squirrels, to scare people in their neighborhoods. You are going to be there as a wall against these evil villains that the police have to fight. Thank you. I'm glad you have found that solution. I hope it catches on. It's a wonderful thing. Now, I look forward to, since the backyard is devoid of trees, that you dig it up and plant two units on either end of the building, and finally, air-condition this building. You can put some units in.
Please summarize.
At the basement level with entries, and I'm looking forward to an elevator being put in the front door of the Seneca Building.
Ms. Vores, your time is up.
You are interfering. I don't like to quote Ms. McLean, but this, you are doing exactly what she said.
Yes, I am. The three minutes is up.
Well, please, don't anybody around here threaten me that I'm pushing them. Don't threaten me.
Ms. Vores, please, your time is up. Thank you.
I don't push what's in back of you.
All right. I have no one else signed up for privilege of the floor, so I'm gonna declare that portion of the meeting closed. We'll move to miscellaneous business of the council. Mr. Kozier.
Thank you. Again, this past week, we had a great Saturday here in the city of Schenectady, and it started out with a breakfast that was sponsored by the Schenectady County Youth Bureau and Toys for Tots with our score summer learning camp, men and women. We had over 150 youth from the community there. And I want to say a special thank you to the Women's Organization of the Ancient Order of Hibernians, the JFK Division One, for doing all the cooking, and again, Toys for Tots, the Schenectady City School District, and of course, the city fire department was there as well. And thank you all the families that attended. Also, congratulations to Schenecty County, our big brother, if you will, for their recent Moody's rating of the AA1 rating. I think it's very, very good for the county, they're moving in the right direction. They're one of only four counties in this state that obtained that AA1 status. And I know we are moving forward in our department with Chair Perazzo and the rest of the finance committee, and of course, with Deborah DiGianova and Mr. Ferrari as well, and of course, the good mayor. So, we continue to do the good work, and I really see a great year coming up in 2016. And I would also just like to thank, and I'll let you, Ms. Perazzo, talk about the holiday, the city holiday, and that was a great event as well here in City Hall. But again, just Merry Christmas to everybody and a joyous holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Ms. Porterfield.
Thank you. I just really wanted to mention the telethon that took place on December 1st, which was Giving Tuesday, and to just really thank all the people that supported that effort to, for the miracle on Craig Street. There was over $8,300 that was raised. And I really have to say a special thank you to Assemblyman Angelo Santa Barbara because it was his idea, and he spent an entire four hours being one of the, well, the main host with other co-hosts. And I'd like to also thank OSM, they did a fabulous job. It was the first telethon of its kind live at the Proctor's Theater, so, you know, we expect to see it again, but they did a fabulous job. And I won't say that it went off without a hitch, but it went off pretty well. Like to also thank Philip Morris and Zebulon Schmidt, all the volunteers that came out. The community really came out and supported this, and volunteers came from all over to answer phones and do all of that. So, couldn't have done it without all those wonderful people stepping up, and of course, to all the donors that gave to the effort. And so, the group will be coming back again to City Council to discuss that more, but I wanted to take this opportunity immediately after the telethon to say thank you. I'd like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy Holiday Season, and looking forward to all the wonderful things. Well, we have one more council meeting before the New Year, so I'll save that.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Perazzo.
So, as I stand every two weeks and say, there's just so many good things to talk about that I've seen over the past couple of weeks. I do wanna commend the group that worked on the telethon. It was really quite impressive. They just had act over act over act, and it was more than four hours of just a wonderful variety of people coming up to share their experiences, or sing, or dance, and all sorts of good things. We also had our first chili chow down. I understand Ms. Vicaro over there was a judge, and it was a challenge to sample all of the wonderful chilies that were available, but she persevered, and we had some winners, and it was all good. And this Saturday was a wonderful day on several accounts. I think that the telethon showed that when a group of people have passion and come together, they really can make a difference. And piggybacking on that was a wonderful announcement for Prince Prav and his group of students that will be embarking on quite a journey to create a film that doesn't, is not a sequel to Fast Life, but will continue on in that vein in telling important stories and really challenging teenage pregnancy, why we're struggling with teenage pregnancy, and through a peer effort, sending a positive message. And they've been awarded with a handsome grant from the Schenectady Foundation, and really looking forward to see how they go forward with it because the youth that they had at the press conference were just absolutely phenomenal. And he's talking about taking it to an even higher level of production than Fast Life, and we were all very, very impressed with that. And then our city hall was teeming, I think is a good word for it, with children and families and crafts, and there was a line for the horse-drawn carriage. And whether you are excited that we have snow, or you're not excited that we have snow, I think the good weather really brought our families out in abundance for the upcoming holidays. So, thank you to all that participated, and our streets were nice and full downtown with Matilda and Prince's effort in our city holiday, and it was a good day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mudverin.
Thank you. Just wanna touch on the miracle on Craig Street. I was so happy to join them at Proctor's, a wonderful group of people trying to do amazing work for our youth and try to save Carver. I encourage everyone out there to please support this group. They are doing a good job, and we can expect better from them. Just a touch on the landlord thing. I would like to encourage all the landlords, please, it's the law to get your rental certificate. And to the tenants, please make sure that the apartment is livable before you move in. And if landlords are collecting rent and they're not fixing the apartment, you have an obligation, a duty, to call the Code Enforcement Department and to report these things. Please. I just would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday. Please have an enjoyable festive time with your family, your friends, your neighbor. And please be safe and have a happy and festive season. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Riggi?
Everyone, Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday Season. This is a great time of year. But Mayor, I think you're working on this problem on Delamont Avenue, I hope you are. Unfortunately, Mr. Mudverin, sometimes when people go to code, that's when the landlords tighten up and they give people eviction notices. But what you're saying is correct, but that does happen, and that's the sad part. So, I think we're gonna have to tighten up our rental certificate program since it's not being enforced properly, and we have situations like this happening. So, I hope this works out, and I hope everyone has a Happy Holiday Season. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, I want to thank everyone who helped put together Saturday's City Holiday. It was a great day. Everyone got to come out and enjoy building activities and festivities, join my colleagues, and wishing everyone a Merry Christmas, enjoy the holiday season, and only the best in 2016. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. And I just also like to add my comments. I thought the city holiday was wonderful. I came down, I said there were lines everywhere, and everybody seemed to be having a really good time. So, I think it was just a very successful day. And I too would like to wish everyone, whatever holiday you celebrate this season, I wish you a happy and healthy one. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kozier, seconded by Mr. Mudverin, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned.